We've got nine o'clock, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're opening with a prayer for Mr. T. McCovey.
Good morning.
Morning.
I tell you, I just had a hot flash. You're gonna have to excuse me this morning. You know, as a pastor, one of the questions I've often been asked is, you know, where do we get our truth from? Right, you know, you turn on social media and be like, is this really true? Or you look at the news and is this really true? And so folks are, I know at my church have been asking me this question, you know, where do we go? You know, everywhere you look, there's turmoil going on. And I said, well, not necessarily. I said, have you looked in your Bible lately? That's where your hope is gonna come from. That's where your joy is gonna come from. It's not gonna come in all this other stuff. And my message to you this morning is to, you know, our hope is in God. And when we look to Him, watch this now, we can't make God bigger, right? We have to see Him bigger. Because with so much going on in the world now, it's like God is being turned down and our faith is being watered down. I heard it put like this, it said, we watered our faith down so much down that if it was medicine, it wouldn't cure anybody. And if it was poison, it wouldn't kill anybody. So this morning, let's get back to our faith. Let's look into God's Word and find the truth. And Jesus said this, "The truth will set you free." Amen? Amen.
Amen.
Father God, we thank you again for another blessed day, Lord, and we give you glory and honor and praise for who you are, Lord. And no matter what shame you throws at us, and no matter what this world throws at us, Lord, you shed in your word that you sit high and look low, that heaven is your throne and earth is your footstool. But we thank you for sending your son, Jesus, into this sinful and sick world, not to condemn the world, but the world may be saved through him. But we thank you, we love you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
I pray to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we've got two public hearings, both set for 9:00 AM. Do we have someone here to represent those? Is there somebody here? Okay, Donovan.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Donovan Scruggs and I am representing the developers associated with the TIF project located at the corner of Government Street and Pine Drive in Ocean Springs. We've talked to some of you a little bit about this in the past and basically I think this is a great day for the city of Ocean Springs and Jackson County. The proposed hotel is a 108-room hotel that is going to cost approximately $56 million. To put in perspective, Hampton Inn may be about $12 million. Hilton Garden Inn may be about $20 million. And this particular hotel is going to be $56 million for those same amount of rooms. It's a Curio Hotel, which is of the Hilton line. This is Hilton's premier property. While it will use a Hilton reservation system, it really will not have Hilton or any other trademark along the signage. It's going to be, you know, it'll have a name that's unique to Ocean Springs. What we did during the process of this project was work with the city. Worked with the city for a very long time in trying to get a good plan together. When this project started out, it was going to be strictly a hotel located on that property. And the city was going to develop the southern portion of Pine Drive, which is the current public worksite, into kind of a mixed-use space with a number of different uses, including a conference center. Pushback occurred and during that time, the developer said, "We can build a conference center inside this hotel." So it really frees up the entire rear portion, the city portion of the property, for public improvements. And they've gone a long ways in trying to listen to the concerns of citizens and put together a plan that is truly public and not commercial or residential. This is purely public. So we are going, this plan does include approximately 8,000 square feet of conference room space, which, you know, I've been in this business for a number of years, either on the public side or on the private side. And something Ocean Springs has always tried to get was a good hotel in downtown. Margaret Miller with the Chamber and Cynthia, both have spoke of the need for a big hotel in the downtown area and the need to actually have conference room space. We don't have that. This will allow mid-sized conferences to be held in Ocean Springs, which will only spend more money in downtown Ocean Springs and in other areas. I think this is a great reuse of the property. I live on Pine Drive. I can see the water tower from my backyard. I know where this site is and I know what's going to happen. And as a neighbor, I'm not saying all neighbors are in favor of this project, but as somebody who's going to definitely be impacted by this project, I see it as a very, very good use. I think it will answer a lot of the needs that the city has and the county has for that matter. And I'm hoping that you, gentlemen today, will vote in favor of this TIF project. You know, one thing that I do want to point out is there has been a lot of concerns raised about the site as far as potential environmental issues. This developer is going to do everything he can to eliminate or mitigate those issues. Hilton, as stated previously, is going to put a $56 million hotel on the site. Not many people who know what they're doing is going to invest that kind of money on a site that is considered toxic or has any kind of, you know, cloud hanging over it. So, I mean, one of our first steps will be to remedy those issues and make sure that the site is indeed clean and usable. We've been in conversations with DEQ for over a year now. In fact, Mr. Ross, I think you were at that meeting where they came down and spoke on a Saturday afternoon. And basically, a lot of the things you may have heard about this site are simply exaggerated or even not true. So I do think this is a good plan. I think it's a great location. I think it's going to only build up downtown Ocean Springs and I hope you, gentlemen, will approve this plan today. I'll be happy to ask any questions I can related to this plan.
What is the expected bondable amount by the city portion of the TIF right now already? What are y'all anticipating the bond to be?
The, I believe the bond is gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood south of $5 million.
And that's for the city portion? Or is that the total overall?
That's the total portion.
Okay, and the city's portion, they, what did they grant? They granted 100% of sales?
I think it was 100 ad valorem and 50% sales.
Okay, 50, okay, 150.
Regarding the environmental issues, I would have thought that they would pretty much be resolved before this point. I mean, we're going public with a hotel, so it just doesn't seem like the right sequence. Can you talk about the environmental issues? How many? Is it just DEQ and where do you think it stands? Could it take years to get resolved?
No, sir, not at all. The, and I'm not an environmental scientist, but I trust your imagination. But so I'll tell you in my third grade level, the way I understand this. The site, the property is under contract and it is expected to close this month. So the owners have not purchased it yet. There is question about retaining and transferring liability for the environmental portion of it. The developer wants the responsibility for the environmental portions on his, on the property that will include the hotel. With that, once, there is a small portion of this TIF bond that could be eligible for the cleaning of that, of some of those contaminants. You know, the TIF only pays for public improvements. And so if there are contaminants located in areas that are considered public, then some of the TIF proceeds can actually be used to help clean that site, clean that area. The other route, if the, if the contaminated portions are under the foot of the building, then of course, those will not be eligible because buildings are not eligible for TIF. So I do think that there will be a portion. Now, the opposite route we could have gone was through a program through DEQ pushes for brownfield abatement, which actually allows them to pay us back like two and a half times of any investment based on sales tax. The city really did not like that approach and we don't really like it either. So we want to get in and move as fast as we can to clean the site up and we anticipate it being cleaned within like six months.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yes. Six months, you know, actually starting work, you know.
And these areas used to belong to the city of Ocean Springs as well? They had the, the maintenance shop and all that stuff? So they moving the maintenance shop and everything to the city of Ocean Springs?
Yes, sir, they're moving it out there to a site that is located west of Ocean Springs Road, kind of across from Rouse's.
That light where XO XO clothing? Right there goes into the, I think the Goodwill or something is across the street.
Yeah, you're going a different direction than I would, but yeah, the old Blockbuster building would be behind you.
Yeah, Blockbuster was there.
Everybody knows Blockbuster.
If someone's under 20, they don't even know what a Blockbuster is probably.
Yeah, we just showed our age, yeah.
All right, do we have, do we have any more questions?
Donovan, you know how many years the city agreed to do the TIF?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yes, sir.
And that's what they're asking of the county?
Yes, sir.
Seventy-five, fifteen, correct, Jim?
Seventy-five, fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Well, yeah, we could ask that.
Fifteen years. Something like that.
So our, yeah, our, usually what we do is generally 15 and 75.
Yes, sir.
And that would only, for this, only part eligible would be the ad valorem portion because that's all we would have there. So what is that anticipated to be per year?
I ran the number down, 56 million, but should be pretty significant.
Well, you're not gonna get your 56 million for a long time.
91,000.
So they get 75% of that?
Typically, you know, the way this works, that's not typically the way this works, is the developer will front, will put out the entire investment, the $56 million. And then after it has been constructed and after it's an operator and after Mr. Elmore goes out and actually puts his eyes on it and does an assessment, it's when we can begin to get a portion of the ad valorems. So you're talking about, you know, two or three years down the line before any TIF bonds would be sold and that we would be eligible for any of those reimbursements. And the same thing with the sales tax portion. They're not going to take us on our word as to how much sales tax will be generated by this project. They're actually gonna let it run for at least six months or a year, see what those actual sales tax proceeds are and then the TIF bond will be sized according to that.
I mean, for general comp, for general understanding, I guess, in the public, you know, TIFs aren't done so often to where a lot of people even know how they work probably. So, I mean, people forget. But generally, a TIF, the builder, developer pays for everything upfront.
Yes, sir.
Bonds are sold, developer is reimbursed and then the revenue from that portion of the taxes that has been committed is used to pay the payments. If for some reason the revenue is not made, that bondholder takes the loss of whatever that number is.
Correct.
So that's the risk of buying those bonds.
Right, it's about like, let's, that ourselves again, it's about like buying some Enron stock, you know, back at the end of the day. It is basically the responsibility of the purchaser of those bonds and the liability or whatever you want to call it. I mean, the, by the way, the state statute is written, this county cannot pay a dime for this. You can't even pay for the legal advertisement. All of that, you know, is paid for by the bond proceeds. So, you know, this is really a situation to where there is no risk. There is no risk to the county if it, I mean, we've got a site here, I think, in Pasgulla where they anticipated bonds and anticipated revenues that never showed up and accordingly, the bonds can't be sold and the developer cannot be reimbursed. It's totally on him. If the bonds are not there, if the project falls apart, if, if it, if anything at all happens, he can't sell bonds and he can't be reimbursed and the county is not on the hook for any of that. It's really a very, very-
And the purpose, I mean, for general public to understand and for us too, I guess, would be, you use a TIF if you're in competition for a project to occur or if a project may be gonna occur at a lower level or a not as nice a project. That TIF tool gives us the ability to make the project become a next-level, better project or maybe to get it here versus maybe Mobile or somewhere else if you're in competition. But if you're not in competition with anyone for the project, sometimes there's no reason for a TIF. Or if the project's gonna happen regardless, sometimes there's no reason for a TIF.
Right, and I mean, Mr. Ross, one thing, you know, I want to point out as far as that, you know, next level or what have you, a big portion of that is the conference center. I mean, this is a center that, you know, is, it is advantageous for the hotel operator, but it is a lot more advantageous, you know, for the city. The city was going to develop it and it was gonna cost them $8 million or $20 million. And instead of them doing it, you know, the developer said, "He can do that on his property and on his dime." So it's really taking a burden off the city and that, I think, is what makes it truly a good idea for the TIF. Then the conference center is not fundable through the TIF. That is not an eligible expenditure. So it is going to be, still goes back to the public portion of its sidewalks, the improvements, parking areas, stormwater, things that are infrastructure-related.
But Donovan, it is still the city issuing the debt. I mean, it's still public funds. State law prevents you paying from general fund. But if for some reason, this, after the bonds are issued and it can't be paid, a lot of times those things have to be renegotiated and pushed out because, I mean, it's still issued under the debt, under the city's debt. It's still public funds being used to pay the debt. Just FYI, I mean, it's still public funds and it's, and it, you know, you're not receiving taxes for that project because they're going to pay off the, or you are, but they're going to pay the bond.
But yeah, but it's taxes that, you know, currently are not present. You know, I mean, we're, the whole idea is that as we build a $56 million project versus a project that has, you know, zero public, zero improvements on site, the new, the new taxes are going to be, you know, are what we get a portion of, not the existing taxes.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just saying that, I mean, you still have some credit, credit risk and, I mean, because it could affect your credit rating if these things are not paid. But you're just limited on how you can pay them based on these resolutions and agreements.
Right, because this is on the city's-
This would be on the city's books and we would be making a pledge to those bonds for that.
All right, do we have any more questions? Is there anybody else in support of this project?
I would like to say something-
Well, I'm gonna give an opportunity for people for or against. So anybody for this project? You're for it?
I would like to say something about the environmental. In regards to the environmental, you know, there's a lot of concern about what is called forever chemicals, but if you look at the data, the scientific data shows that 99.7% of Americans have the same compounds in their blood, okay? So already, most, the vast swath of American population already has the same chemical compounds in their bloodstream as detected on the property. If you look at cows, dogs, they all have the same. So more or less, the whole United States at this point, it's ubiquitous in our population and this came from the, you know, the synthetic revolution in the 1970s. So I know it seems very scary, but unless we have precise data from the EPA, I don't know, I think it's very possible that some of the environmental concerns could be, be over-magnified or blown out of concern. So if we get the data and the data corroborates that, look, this is within statistical limits, then it actually seems like it's not as scary, the, these chemicals, because they're, you'll find them in your backyard, you'll find them in the meat in your refrigerator. So they're pretty much everywhere at this point. So unless we have precise data, which I think the EPA has already conducted and MDQ has already conducted, you know, I think they would have like looked at the site and said, well, this, this isn't the limits of statistical toleration for this chemical. I think then, you know, this is actually a good project for, for the city and county. So, but we need more precise data and that data needs to be very transparent. And then I think, once that's clarified, it should be a good project to go forward.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for?
Hey there, I'm Cynthia Sutton with the Ocean Springs Chamber, Main Street Tourism Bureau and I have with me Dan Mobley, one of our board of directors, also a tourism professional. I just want to just kind of say to you guys that, you know, at the Chamber, Main Street, you have two certified tourism marketing professionals working each and every day to track tourism, celebrate tourism and bring tourism to Ocean Springs, while we still highlight, of course, the authentic character of what Ocean Springs is. In 2023, more than 300,000 visitors pass through Ocean Springs. The average stay in town for a festival is 2.5 nights, spending more than $300 on hotel amenities alone. In Ocean Springs, more than 50% of our businesses, small business, is tourist traffic. So in downtown alone, we currently have about 50 hotel rooms and no conference center. This hotel on Pine Drive will be situated right outside of the hustle and bustle of downtown and it will give, it will be a very high-quality hotel room with the additional batch of rooms needed to help keep tourists in Ocean Springs. So with that being said, the Ocean Springs Chamber, Main Street and Tourism Bureau do, does support the development of this hotel and conference center in town. Any questions?
How many rooms?
The new hotel is gonna have about 108 rooms.
108? Thanks.
What, do y'all know the number, like, for other hotel, like a Curio's 108? What is a Hampton Inn generally? Do y'all know that?
Normally a Hampton Inn, because it's on the roadside, 150 rooms.
So they're a little, Curio's a little bit smaller, not a lot.
Oh, yeah, not a lot.
So do y'all know, you said 300,000 visitors last year. Do you know how many of them stayed in Ocean Springs? How many are outside that would be potentially coming inside?
Yes, well, all I can tell you right now is we're working on some of those economic impact studies. For say, Peter Anderson alone, about, currently about 40% are staying within the town. Now, what that means is, that doesn't mean they're staying in hotel rooms. We only have 50 hotel rooms. So they're staying with friends and family, they're staying in Airbnbs, but some of the surveys that we've done related to our festivals, they would rather stay closer to town, closer to these festivals, instead of going to the casinos or the other hotels.
Has anything been done to try to determine if you build a nice hotel that people are gonna come to, what does it do to the Airbnbs? Does it impact them or is it a different market?
We have not done any study on anything related to that because right now, as you know, the Airbnbs are growing and there's some things that were, people, the tourism entities are still trying to gather on those Airbnbs.
Let me, let me answer that for you. One, the kind of person that would come to this hotel is probably not a VRBO person because that's a tourist. This is gonna be a convention delegate or a small board of directors or a small meeting. It's totally different people that are gonna be doing this. So, you know, that's what would make this work. And I come from a hotel convention bureau background for over 50 years and I've seen feasibility studies in a lot of cases. This would work in our city, my adopted city, because we don't have it. We've, we've got the roost, we've got the springs, we've got, you know, those which are great hotels for tourists and they do very well. But there's no place for them to meet in the same hotel that they're staying in. And that's what this offers to the city of Ocean Springs.
And that this convention space would, it would be able to house a convention of like, so we can wrap our head around what kind of size that is, I guess?
You know, it's gonna depend on, you know, and everybody talks about a convention center. There's not a convention, there's not a convention center.
You know, four, 500 individuals.
Like 400 attendees, so, wrapping my head, I mean-
Right now, like we have, say, the community center in Ocean Springs, max 175.
So how many people can fit in this convention space or this-
Yeah, there's a, you know, a fellow at Davis and he says he can sit about 200 people in there jam-packed and they're gone.
Jam-packed, not recommended.
Yeah, 200, I think, is very, very hard. We was gonna add a lot more area.
So about 400?
Auditorium style, you're seating about one in every 10 square feet. So you can look at what his numbers are for the ballroom. And it's not a convention center. It doesn't have floor plates, it doesn't have electricity in the floor and all those things that they have in Gulfport at a pure convention center.
Yeah, this is more like an event room, really.
Exactly.
A big event room where you could do a wedding reception.
Small meetings.
Meetings.
We could bring some of our tour conference groups that are going to the casinos, possibly over into Ocean Springs, which they always spend a day in Ocean Springs, but why not just keep them in Ocean Springs? For days.
We're behind it.
All right, we have any more?
One, one question, just-
Yes, sir.
You said initially, there's about 50 hotel rooms, motel rooms in Ocean Springs?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That cannot include, that must include only the city limits-
Correct.
-of Ocean Springs. What, what people consider Ocean Springs is more like that. They consider St. Martin Hotel, Motel. How many of those motels in the, just say, the Ocean Springs overall area? Are there, it's gotta be hundreds.
There's about 1,000.
1,000, okay.
But only Gulf Hills has any meeting space versus those other hotels, Holiday Inn, Hampton Inn and some of those that are on Washington Avenue closer to I-10, so.
And that sales tax doesn't go to the city either.
We're kind of nitpicking here because the hotel is saying, "I think the market is there. I'm gonna put up the money to build a hotel, so I'm gonna do it." So I don't know why we're sitting here nitpicking numbers.
Well, I mean, they obviously know that their pro forma says they can make it and Hilton, I'm sure, has a pretty good methodology of determining that.
Right, correct.
It's not their first time to build a hotel.
Yeah, they've got lots of hotel rooms. It's the old story, they'll be in, that shall come.
I could say too, on the VRBO, my question there, I've never personally stayed in the VRBO because it's a lot, for me, it seems a whole lot easier just to pick somebody online and say, "Hey, this is where I'm going" and not have to worry about all the individual comparisons. Because a VRBO is a whole lot different shopping process and you gotta look at what they are, you don't know what they are until you show up, really. So the hotel with a name tells you what it is and it's turnkey, you're done.
Been rough a lot, though. Been rough a lot, though.
And they also usually have better amenities than a VRBO would too. So, I can see it being a different market.
I've seen both sides of the VRBOs, and you don't go to Orange Beach or to Gulf Shores, because if you're staying in a condo, that's basically a VRBO as well, so.
Well, we've stayed in those, so I guess technically, those may be, but they also have, they're managed by a bigger group and you can, it's a different, it feels more like a hotel.
Right.
It's not somebody's house or part of somebody's house that winds up being a VRBO or a bed and breakfast.
But if I go there, I would prefer to stay in a named hotel. All right, do we have any more questions?
Thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Do we have anybody in opposition here? All right, so we'll start the folks opposed. Yeah, come on.
I'm strictly opposed, because I think it's a great idea. A Master Sergeant Keith, Broadway, United States Army, retired. I was in Desert Storm. I came back from Desert Storm, that was over about six months. I was exposed to the burning pits and all the chemicals that were burnt in there, the plastics and vinyl and all this other good stuff. Never had asthma a day in my life. Twenty-three years old when I went in the army, the day I went in, I could pass a PT test for a twenty-three-year-old. When I come out of basic, I was well over a hundred. On my fortieth birthday, I could run two miles in about twelve and a half, thirteen minutes, fifty-five, sixty push-ups, same setups, if not more. When I come back from Desert Storm, I was on a six-month no PT profile, because I couldn't breathe, because of the chemicals that we were exposed to over there from all the burn pits. I spent three weeks, if y'all, y'all are old enough to remember that, when Saddam was retreating, he blew up the oil wells, because he thought that with all the smoke, we couldn't see him. We spent three weeks underneath that, breathing all that in. The VA and the Army sent us all these tests, nothing wrong with you, nothing wrong with you. And I'm not the only one, there's thousands of us. But now, you've heard of the PACT Act, where they finally saying, yeah, there's something, there's something there. Well, now they tell me I have asthma. I can't run the distance of this building, let alone do thirty or forty push-ups, the thirty, forty setups. And it's because of my lungs, what I've inhaled. I'm actually for this project, and the reason I say that is because when all my high school classmates, when I told them I was moving down to Ocean Springs, because I have friends that come down here to vacation, they said, oh, you can host our next class reunion, and this will be perfect for that. Along with I have family come down, family and friends, ten, fifteen times a year, I would like them to be able to stay closer than these hotels. However, if this chemicals are not abated, I would not recommend them staying there, simply because of my experiences. Someone who was going to work there, if they're going to be exposed to this day in, day out, for months at a time, are they going to be in that situation? How's it going to affect them? Because we're talking about stuff that's over the EPA limit. I mean, it's something to think about. I mean, I think it's a great idea, but I think the environmental aspect has got to be taken care of. And I think passing it on to the developer is wrong. I think the company that did it should have to clean it, and it should have already been done. It should not have been drug out this long. That's inexcusable. That's inexcusable on the city and inexcusable on the county. And on the state, it should have been done. And that needs to be taken care of before y'all move forward. And that's all I got to say.
Anybody else opposed?
To compliment, to compliment this point, in the tourism ministry, everything is based on reviews. So, if there is a negative press, let's say the VRBOs are losing business, I'm not saying they would, but let's just, let's just make up an example. Let's say they're losing business now. They could go on Google reviews and say, this is on a contaminated, toxic site, this new Hilton Curio Hotel. Even whether or not that is scientifically or biologically true, the fear perception makes it true in the tourism ministry. It's already considered true at that point. So, that in this regard, like what what my dear friend Keith is saying, that if if this is not completely analyzed, evaluated, and all public fear of it is eliminated, whether that's biologically real or not, if the public is afraid of it, then more or less, I think it significantly reduces the revenue of the hotel, because word will get out and say, well, it's built on a toxic waste site, or there could be this in there, there could, just the fear that there could be is enough to tank, tank it from a, from a tourism perspective. So, unless the county can ensure, and this is almost like a PR sort of thing for the county now, unless the county can ensure, look, this has been completely solved and mitigated, I think there's always that creeping element that some competition or some competitor or someone will say, look, it's built on a toxic site, don't sit here, go, go to this VRBO center, go down the street to the, to the one and same Martin there. So, to really maximize the revenue of this hotel, all, as much fear of this must be mitigated, and it must be made completely clear and transparent, not only to the public, it has to be made clear to everybody that, like, look, all of this has been appropriately analyzed, it's been accounted for, and there is no substantial, there is no risk to the public. If there is a perception that, look, there's, this is dicey, then it's from a tourism perspective, not a biological one, but from a tourism one, people are not going to stay there, because they don't know what's what's going to happen, what's going to happen to my kids if I bring them here. I don't want anything to happen to my, like, if you're pregnant, like, they're like, I don't want it, I don't want, like, anything to some unknown compound that I have no idea what it is. I don't want that to, like, impact the fetus or my baby that's developing. So, that from that, from that perspective, it's very important, you know? You know, if we don't know what is in there, its concentrations, and if it's not completely cleared, I think it substantially, and especially in this small town sort of thing, it substantially harms, like, the profitability of the hotel. So, to maximize its true capabilities and capacities for revenue generation and tax generation, that site has to be completely remediated.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Is there anybody else here that wants to comment one way or the other? You can come on, yeah.
Morning, gentlemen. My name is Michaelon, I'm retired, that's one reason I'm here, probably aren't. I live in Ocean Springs and grew up there. I don't know many of you, maybe you know me, but just briefly on my background, if you know of me, I worked for Chevron for thirty-eight years and retired. I worked all over the world, I held a number of positions as part of the executive committee for the corporation. My background is in engineering and project management and project financing. I actually managed onshore production in the southeast United States for a while, where I had responsibility for environmental cleanup projects. I'm here today speaking on behalf of members of savenoceansprings.org. Our members are opposed to this project financing. And I'll speak to three points, if you'll allow me the time, I'll get through it as quickly as I can. We're against it because we think the project or what's proposed, the incremental tax financing funding is inexpensive and unnecessary corporate welfare. We think that moving forward with this project at this time, in the manner that the city has proposed, puts the environmental cleanup at risk. And then, finally, we think this is a bad location for the hotel. We're not opposed to hotel, think it's a nice idea to have a hotel in Ocean Springs that has some space in it for people to gather. But I think the benefit has been overstated, this is not the right location for it. So, I want to speak to each of those three points just briefly. On the corporate welfare side, taxpayers should not be responsible for unnecessarily juicing up profits for developers. And this incremental tax financing covers expenses, including the environmental cleanup, that should be the responsibility of the developer. It's his parking, it's his landscaping, it's his, it's his mechanical site infrastructure, it's his electrical site infrastructure, it's lighting. All of that is being proposed to be paid for by taxpayers. The environmental cleanup portion in the literature that the city of Ocean Springs put forward was about a third to maybe more of the cost of the bond. I can tell you from my own experience, the gentleman who spoke here earlier said there's a lot of uncertainty on environmental cleanup cost and what has to be removed. I personally oversaw probably seventy or eighty environmental cleanups over the course of my career on, you know, contaminated groundwater. And oftentimes, you don't know how long it's going to take or how long it's going to cost until you actually start it. And I, I hope when this under, this cleanup is undertaken, it only takes six months, but I don't think anybody really knows the answer to that. This is, this is expensive financing. So, this bond, you know, and again, this is the city of Ocean Springs information. If you, you know, you put in place a four million dollar bond, you'll end up paying six million dollars in interest and other expenses to pay that bond out. And I don't know that that even includes the cost of administering or placing the bond. So, it's not cheap financing, and it's being paid for by taxpayers. And it's not without risk. That was, you know, the statement that this is without risk is is not true. And I think Mr. Eldridge appropriately pointed out that if this bond fails, it's not good. If, if, if the tax revenue is not there to pay the bond off, it's bad for Ocean Springs, it's bad for Jackson County, and it's bad for taxpayers. The environmental cleanup, as gentleman that spoke earlier, another gentleman spoke earlier, said, should be handled by the people that are responsible for it. LICA is a publicly traded company. Once this environmental cleanup starts, they should be expected to complete it, however long it takes or whatever the expense is. Putting this in the hands of an LLC company with undefined resources or assets or capability or even experience doing environmental cleanup, probably not advisable. We tried to find out a little bit about the developer. You know, back of first or second week of May, when we looked at it, the address that was listed for the company was a non-existent Ocean Springs address. We communicated that to our warrant to Alderman, Mr. Alderman. A couple of days later, the LLC changed their registration to another city in Mississippi with a new address. As far as the location, Government Street is a mess. And if you live in Ocean Springs and you try and travel on Government Street, you'd be aware that many people actually don't drive down Government Street from about where this proposed location is, well, actually, a little bit further west of this location. People drop off to Bowen Avenue, or they drop off to Calhoun Avenue to avoid Government Street. It's dense, it's crowded. I live downtown, I don't drive on Government Street. I avoid Government Street on the weekends, because of the noise and the congestion and the partying. This location is adjacent to a school, it's in a resident, right adjacent to a residential area. We think that, many of us think that this is a play just to expand Ocean Springs Entertainment District. Love to see another hotel, it needs to be in another inappropriate spot. Just wrapping up, members of savenoceansprings.org, pray that you reject this project. Please hold LICA responsible for cleaning up this site. Once that's done, this property will probably be attractive to investors that will be willing to invest their money to develop a project and not put county and city taxpayer funds at risk. Thank you.
I have a question to the board attorney. And I've heard a couple of times that the cleanup should be on the back of the people who messed up the property to begin with. And I completely agree that whoever the owner of the property is should be responsible for cleaning it up. But I want to ask the board attorney, if for some reason we chose that we wanted to go down that path, we would first have to have the city on board with that. But would there be legal recourse, and how would that work? And would there be a guarantee of making them clean it up?
If, if what?
If the, if, say, the county and the city said, all right, we're going to go after LICA, make them clean this property up, what would the odds of that working be? And it, would it even be possible?
You know, Ms. Ross, I really don't know the answer to that question without looking into it. I would think, yeah, I really don't know the answer to that. I mean, I was, let me ask a question before I get into that. Is there actually a plan in place approved by MDEQ to clean the property? Do we know?
There was a plan that was put in place in like two thousand nine or eight, somewhere around that time period, where they planted the willow trees, and they fenced the property off, and they started injecting whatever the chemical is that disperses the bad chemical. And that was supposed to take five years.
We're, we're at twenty twenty-four, that started around two thousand eight. So, I mean, we're like sixteen, seventeen years past that, and it's still got areas that are above the limits. So, there was a plan, but it wasn't one that was obviously good enough or strong enough. What I understand, and we'll bring Donovan back up for his closing, but we'll also ask him the timeline or what he knows about the proposed plan. But there, yes, there was supposed to be one.
Yeah, the county doesn't own the property, I don't know that the county.
It's privately owned.
It really has a dog in the hunt, other than if we issue the bond, some of our ad verum taxes generated would go to repay the bonds. Whether or not we could ensure that anything's actually done as far as a cleanup, I don't know that the county would have much of a say-so in that regard.
We're not voting on a bond issue, we are voting to support payment of a bond issue. This is not our bond.
Right, right, it's not our bond.
Correct, just, just the, the issue before the board today is the, is the TIF district and the TIF plan, not necessarily the financing aspect of it, but the TIF plan, you're, you're correct, Ken.
If, I guess we can ask Donovan, in, in the, in the plan, they have a plan to mitigate the pollution that is in the ground now, is that right?
Yes, I mean, there is a lot out of it that does address the, the cleaning of the site.
Do they have a timeline saying X days or months?
No, sir, no, sir, but.
Before we do something?
Once we, once, you know, once the property is acquired and the responsibilities are, are laid out, and then we begin to move forward with construction, now that is, you know, day one, the, the number one item to do, to address the site, to bring it into compliance with DEQ and any other agency. The city's got a, has identified this area in its urban renewal district. And part of that is that before anything is allowed to move forward, the site has to be cleaned to their specifications. And, and Robert Wilkinson went deep detail with us at the public hearing there, making sure that the city had no liability associated with this. And he is confident that there is no liability, because it's a private project. It's not a, it's a private property owner. And to, to say that this is corporate welfare, I mean, it's, wow. This is an incentive that's provided to developers, and whether it's through the DEQ Brownfield Program, the Mississippi Gulf Coast Restore Act, or anything else to try to encourage redevelopment of a site, that is what incentives are about, it's not corporate welfare. We see what Doing Nothing has done for the past ten or fifteen years. The site sat there and has done nothing, and nothing has happened there. The incentive we're asking for is to make sure that this developer, who is willing to do a Curio-type development, which is fifty-six million dollars, is successful and moves forward. What you don't want to see is the next guy to come along and say, you know, I can do a Days Inn or a, or a Hampton Inn, or, or some other smaller type facility on this site, you know, that may not meet the, the desires of the city. Mr. Ross, you're, you're familiar with the town, I don't like a whole lot, but Oxford, Mississippi. Oxford's, I would go up there because my daughter chose that school. And, and I'm blown away by that town and, and the amenities and the hotels that are within walking distance to downtown. That make, that strengthens a downtown. Putting a developer, a hotel out on the highway, on Highway ninety or the interstate, really does not do anything but create more congestion downtown, because people have to get in their car and drive downtown to appreciate it. At this location, people can actually walk out the front door and walk downtown to enjoy. So, some of the traffic concerns that Mr. Lon spoke of actually will be reduced by allowing this site to be developed. Me, to me, this is what you want downtown. You want visitors downtown, and visitors need to stay downtown, because they can walk to and from the restaurants and the shopping venues they have there. To me, this is a home run, and I.
Ask a couple of questions too, when you get done.
Okay. Okay.
One is, is the property zoned for a hotel motel now?
Yes, sir.
So without any...
We are not looking at any exceptions, any variances, or anything along those lines from the city.
So it could be a hotel motel, curio, whatever could be developed there today?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
From a zoning standpoint?
I mean, yeah. Like I said, it could be a...
Second question is on the environmental part of it. As they do the cleanup of it, will it be monitored?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. EPA, DEQ?
Yeah. The site is on DEQ's radar. And we've met with Thomas...
So they would be there during the process to ensure that it all is cleaned and to their specifications, there is an involvement there with DEQ?
Correct. We're working with Trey Hess and PPM as our consulting expert, who is former head of Brownfields and all that we do.
So this project kind of guarantees the cleanup of the property?
This property does a lot more to guarantee the cleanup of the property than sitting back, clicking our heels, and hoping something happens in the next ten or fifteen years, or going into a lawsuit with LICA, who will just drag it out for probably ten or fifteen years. I mean, this makes it, if there are legitimate environmental concerns on this site, this takes care of it in the next two years versus a lawsuit or anything else that may be proposed to make this happen. The current plan with DEQ is that you plant a bunch of willow trees and allow it to take care of itself over the next fifty years. We see how that's working out. This is a site that's going to happen a lot quicker and a lot more efficiently if we're allowed to move forward.
Can I ask one question of either Donovan or Brian? On the cleanup issue, doesn't the DEQ dictate the plan to clean up this property? I mean, don't they, that's to say, this is what we've done. You know, you could, you're okay to cap it or we're just going to dig it out?
Two feet, ten feet?
They would be the regulatory agency that looks over it. I think there could be multiple ways to remediate or to fix it, if you will. But they would have to approve those, and I assume that they would be involved until they... Ultimately, they would approve a plan. And DEQ would approve a plan, say, we're okay if you do X to our specifications.
And what we're hoping for is that non-further-action letter, you know? And that's kind of the thing that really sets this thing, meaning stamp of approval from DEQ. So yes, we will be working with DEQ. We cannot do anything without DEQ's blessing.
I just wondered if that plan was in place, I guess.
No, no. To my knowledge, it is not in place. LICA and DEQ has gone back and forth. And then once we take possession of it, we will come up with our plan and work with DEQ to make sure it's mitigated.
So when they transition the property, the liability of the cleanup is going to transfer to the new owner?
Yes. There's a couple of plumes on the site, and then there's some that are off-site. We are not accepting responsibility for off-site. LICA is going to be responsible for the off-site issues, which are, you know, there's one, I think, that's adjacent to the YMCA on the west side of Pine Drive.
So LICA is going to continue to maintain whatever traveled off of the property is their responsibility?
Correct. Correct. Yeah. We're only going to take responsibility for those under the footprints of the property that we are acquiring. But our goal is to clean those things, to clean those areas up as quickly as possible.
Does a timeline exist on that cleanup or a detail of what's going to be done?
You know, in an ideal world, this hotel is constructed in about a 24-month period. The hotel is open for business in about a 24-month period. So that timeline would be way in front of that. So you're talking the first six months. And they can't happen simultaneously. During design, you can actually, in permitting, you can actually go out and start cleaning the site. But we are looking forward to a expedited process as far as getting that cleaned up, Mr. Ross.
All right. We have any more questions?
I'm ready to make a motion. Ms. Ray.
I've got one more comment I'd like to make, and I'd like to hear Donovan react to I've read a lot of TIFs recently, so I'm not going to be super precise. Let's assume that the cleanup is part of Phase One. Okay? Does that make sense?
Okay. Yes, sir.
I believe just about all of these TIFs say the city cannot issue a bond until Phase One is complete, and the hotel motel is complete on the books of the county assessor, and is in fact generating these ad valorem taxes that would be used to pay the bond off, the TIF bond off. Do you agree with all that?
For the most part. This, at present, is only a one-phase project. So it's not a multi-phase. But you're correct in saying that the bonds will not be issued until it is totally complete and is up and running for a number of months.
Okay. So if you can't build a hotel motel until the remediation is complete, then if it's not complete, there will be no hotel, there will be no taxes, so there can't be a bond because there's no revenue stream to pay the bond off.
Exactly.
So if all that's true...
If we do this and we walk away tomorrow, nobody's out anything. If we do this and realize that it cannot be done, nobody's out anything, no bonds were issued, the county's not liable for this.
Well, the new owner is out something.
Yes, the new owner is, yeah. He's out, he's dropped...
So basically, I think this is Ocean Springs' problem, but I don't think there's a whole lot to be worried about, about paying a bond off, because all of that's got to happen before there will ever be a bond. And I think Donovan's agreeing with me.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, yes.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. President, that we table this TIF decision and allow a little more time to pass. Personally, I've heard from dozens of people in Ocean Springs city limits that are just totally feel like this is being rushed upon them. And there's not really been that much due diligence done as far as they're concerned. And I think I've always said that, you know, I haven't heard from anybody other than the couple of people here today that are speaking for it. I've heard more negative on this project than anything. So I would like to make a motion to table this decision, and we take a look at it at a future date.
I'll second.
All right. We've got a motion by Mr. Bossard, the second, by Mr. Taylor, and I'll comment on this. There are a couple of things that I would like more details on, Donovan. And one would be that timeline for the cleanup, because I know once we vote yea or nay on this, then our leverage that we have on any of that is completely gone, because that probably is the only leverage we really have. So I'd like more of a example, drawing out what happens in the timeline and what is done to clean it up so that we can make sure people are comfortable. Because I've had people call me and ask about it, and I've said, you know what? I don't personally think there's a risk with the environmental portion of it there. I've lived near that road, gone to the YMCA my entire life, and still live within probably a half a mile as a crow flies from the site. So I personally don't, but I'm not confident enough to tell every individual who lives close to there that it's fine. I'm comfortable enough with myself to live there. But I wouldn't tell you, hey, yeah, let's bet your kid's life on it. So I would like more of a detailed example of that timeline. And I would also like to know, so we could show people where the traffic is going to be. Because I know we're losing the traffic from Public Works, which is pretty bad around three o'clock, coming out, turning left, and how that compares. Because I would think taking Public Works out of there eliminates most of the traffic that occurs, especially in that afternoon time period. But I'd like to see if there's a way to show that to us. And if we can get those two things, I'm fine with tabling this. And then when we get that information, we can look at it again.
Can we put a timeline on that, either two weeks or thirty days?
How long would it take for you to get the information?
I mean, if you're asking for a traffic study, that's going to be more than thirty days. I mean, that's...
I mean, if you tell us how many cars were leaving Public Works, and then how many would be anticipated at the peak time of...
Yeah, we can do that in-house, you know, an estimate. Because keep in mind, a hotel does not let Public Works that comes at 5:30 in the morning and leaves at 2:00 in the afternoon. This is a site that if you're staying three or four days, you may come at 12 o'clock on one day, or 4 o'clock on one day, and then not leave in four or five days. And then some people will never hop in their car once they're there. So I think that overall, traffic is going to be a little less than what you experience currently. But we can definitely, you know, let folks know before you and have something to you. I would say, I would let Anger maybe to agree with it, but we'll work with Brian on trying to get that day hammered out. I just don't want to do it indefinitely where we're off of, you know, several lines.
And you know, most of the people I've heard from feel like Ocean Springs, or downtown Ocean Springs is losing its charm, of being a small, knit, tight community. And so a lot of your people who've lived down there for a long time feel like they're being pushed out for development. And so I just personally believe, along with these people that have reached out to me, that we just need to kind of pump the brakes a little bit. There's already enough development going on downtown Ocean Springs. Let's see what happens after all that development comes online. And then if there's some more development that can be handled, then that's fine. But I just really personally believe that these folks that have reached out to me have just, you know, they just feel like downtown Ocean Springs is losing its charm. It's going to turn into an Orange Beach, Gulf Shores, or Destin, Florida, where the locals don't even live there anymore. They left. So we can't afford to lose our locals. We've got, the local folks is what helped develop Ocean Springs in this county, and we can't afford to lose any more of them. So that's where I stand.
And I'll agree with Mr. Bossard. You don't ever want to outsell your charm. And the charm is what brought the investment. If we ever do that, then we become Anywhere USA, and we could be anything, anywhere, and we don't have any reason to be here anymore. So that's definitely an important aspect.
I did make the statement a couple of years ago that the secret's out about Ocean Springs, and it is. It's true. The secret's out, and everybody wants to be there. But I just don't think we need to force all this development at one time on those people downtown and Ocean Springs.
All right. We've got a motion by Mr. Bossard, the second, by Mr. Taylor. All in favor to table? Aye. All right.
You didn't ask if there's any opposed.
All right. We'll go on to the second one, the Pasco Gula Ice and Freezer House.
Donovan's going to earn his keep today, isn't he?
This is a project that the board previously approved for the Ice House here in Pasco Gula. Basically, the only change in this project is that we are being required to demo the site as opposed to restore it. Previously, we had planned on restoring the Ice House, and now we're going to demo it. The environmental issues associated with the site made it where it was not cost feasible to restore it. We would not be able to actually start the restoration process. We could not start the development process of the site until the remediation had been given a letter of no further action, which would be two or three years off. So in an effort to make this thing happen quickly or more efficiently, we've worked with the city, we've worked with the Pasco Gula Historic Preservation Group, and we have decided to just take down the Ice House. Public funds associated with this, or not public funds, the TIF dollars associated with this will primarily include a road that will extend from Telephone to Pasco Street. But it's a good project that the city has supported, and y'all have supported previously. PRA is supporting this with some incentive dollars. So hopefully, y'all do the same.
How old is that Ice House, Donovan? You know?
1912, I think.
1912?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no telling what's in there.
There's no telling. Yeah. I think a lot of people have done a lot of things on that site for a long time that probably should not have been done. But we are, you know, hope to get it cleaned up and be something good to see when you come into the city versus what you have currently.
Archives and history had to wait.
Yeah, I think archives and history is primarily oversight is for Mississippi Landmarks, and this is not landmark. It's just an historic preservation district.
All right. Any questions? All right. We'll ask, is anybody opposed to the Ice House project? Anybody opposed? So there's no opposition. Y'all have questions? Y'all want to make a motion? Are y'all ready?
We go ahead with the TIF for Pasco Gula.
All right.
I'll make the motion for it.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Morris, second by Mr. Combest. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. That brings us to amendments to the agenda. Mr. Combest?
I don't have any.
Mr. Morris?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Taylor?
I have none.
So you had none?
None.
Okay. All right. I've got two. One will be road department, I guess, and just a little conversation there. And then the other would be maybe a supervisor item about public safety. We'll see where we go with that. Mr. Bossard?
None.
Mr. Eldridge?
None.
Mr. Fulton?
No.
Mr. O'Neill?
None.
Mr. Colmer?
Yes, just one under Board Attorney Executive Session. Like to have a brief discussion regarding the status of the litigation, Jackson County versus George County and Singing River Services.
All right. Any other amendments to the agenda? Yes?
I've got one under the added consent agenda under HR, resolution for, I passed it out to you guys earlier. It's a resolution to approve, don't make a mistake.
Okay. All right. Any other amendments to the agenda? All right. Do we have a motion except amendments as presented? Move. We've got a motion by Mr. Morris.
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. General public comments?
Yes, just before I get complimentary with the White Paper, let's hear it.
My name is Donovan. I'm from 307 Pine Drive. I've seen y'all a lot. And Mr. Colmer, I'd like to make this part of the record, just for future references. This is in relation to a project that came before the pass, I'm sorry, we talked about some of the different cities and counties today, before the Jackson County Planning Commission earlier this, last month. Gulf Pride put an application in to do an RV center located on Wilford Seymour Road, and it was in an area that's Zone C3 and A2. And in both those districts, the RV park is permitted. I think some of the surrounding property owners submitted an appeal for this, and then their appeal stated that they're opposed to the rezoning. The rezoning is not requested, and we're planning to keep both the C3 and the A2 districts in place. So your ordinance is pretty specific on what's required for an appeal, and I would just like to go on record indicating that I...
I would just like to go on record indicating that, uh, I believe they misstated, uh, their basis for an appeal, and therefore, um, I would look for this body to potentially, uh, disregard the appeal and, and dismiss it.
This was brought to my attention, uh, this morning, and I did, uh, review a letter. I would, uh, prefer that the board allow me a, a, a chance to look at this. If it is an invalid appeal, like any other appeal, then I would, I would, uh, suggest dismissal of it, but I need to look at it, let it go through the process a little bit, um, and, and then I will opine as to whether or not I think it meets the criteria. Obviously, appeals do need to meet the criteria of, uh, that are in place, so...
Yeah, I, I agree, I mean, I, 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 that's, that's what you do, so, please take, please take a look at it, and, uh, if it is indeed, uh, we would love to move forward as quick as possible. I believe y'all talked about sending a hearing, I'd go out, urge you to go ahead and set that hearing, and if indeed it's determined to be invalid, then, uh, then we can just, uh, put it on there for consent, uh, as y'all typically do, uh, but, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's, I, I know y'all took some heat over another RV, uh, development that was located somewhere south of here, and, um, you know, a portion of that consideration was that it was, um, in an area that was residential and not really in close proximity to, uh, interstates and such. This actually, you can stand on site and hear the cars and trucks go by, it's ideal for an RV center, and it's zoned accordingly, so, uh, we, I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thanks.
I'm actually in support of this RV park, um, logistically speaking, um, it has all the favorable factors that make an RV park successful, and one of those factors is its proximity to the interstate. The One and Gold Park Estates is close to ten miles away from the interstate for every single mile, that reduces the profitability of the park. This data has, like, scientific data, peer-reviewed studies have shown that the closer it is to a major thoroughfare or arterial route, the higher probability of success. So, I mean, the One and Gold Park Estates, one of the massive, massive detriments to it was, it was approximately ten miles away from the interstate, having to go through three different school districts, but in contrast, this particular RV park, you know what, does it support economic development? You could say it does support economic development, you know, um, there is gonna be, um, as in, in the country right now, um, there is a shift towards more RVing to begin with as the home prices have increased. So, um, there's, with better technology, infrastructure in the United States, people find it more appealing to travel the country instead of being rooted in the home. So, um, I think the developer of this particular RV park has a financial incentive to actually make sure it's a nice RV park. It actually hurts his profit margin if he lets it become a trailer park, he's, he has such a great location for it, it's small enough to be managed well, so I think he could actually run it more like a luxury RV park. Where in contrast, the One, the One and Gold Park Estates, that does not have a suitable range of factors that make it profitable in the long run, it's vastly big, there's tons of residents, and we're not gonna get into all of that, you've heard it, you've heard it, I'm sure, you've heard it from all of us, so, um, but, you know, in support of that, you know, it's zoned fundamentally, it's also zoned very well in that plot, that parcel of land, so I just think it's a excellent idea, 'cause I don't know what else could go on that parcel of land that, that is, um, fits within the Jackson County ecosystem, and, um, you know, perhaps it supports local businesses, like, these people may come, they may travel through, uh, you know, they'll travel through there for maybe a day or two, come see what's in Downtown Ocean Springs, and then go, go wherever they're on in their journey. So I think that it, it's actually, um, over time, I think that could be a possibly su- suitable location, but that being said, we gotta kind of make sure it doesn't become like Martin's Lake or something like that, so I'm not, I think this developer, from, from what I've heard is, he has a pretty well-established credibility in the public, so just from a, from a feasibility perspective, I think it's in order of magnitude or more, more feasible than the One and Gold Park Estates, so, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Gentlemen, on the, on the consent agenda, this is, uh, you're setting an appeal hearing date of July fifteen, uh, before this board, and I will be glad to give you my opinion as to whether or not the appeal is in itself valid or, or invalid, but we do have it, we'll be setting a date of July fifteen to address this matter.
All right. All right, any other public comment? All right. That brings us to the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? Motion by Mr. Taylor. Second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to department heads, finance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I would like to ask, uh, for approval for the claim stocket.
We've got a motion by Mr. Bossarge.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Combest. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, um, ask for approval on the resolution authorizing interfund loans for fiscal year end September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morris. Second by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion, any opposed? Motion carries.
And ask for approval on the resolution authorizing operating transfers for fiscal year end September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four?
Motion by Mr. Combest.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bossarge. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. All right, planning.
Good morning, the item I have before you is the Planning Commission recommendations for this, Pat, May of twenty twenty-four.
All right, do we have a motion to accept the Planning Commission recommendations? Motion by Mr. Combest, second by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. All right, I guess I'll, uh, put the, I guess the Road Department issue that I had can, can go here, I didn't specifically title it anything, but, um, this works for me, if it works for everybody else. All right, Mr. O'Neil, mine is, um, a cleanup under, I know we've cleaned up under the Highway six oh nine, Washington Avenue Bridge before, because of the, the homeless issue that's under there, but I want to make sure that everybody understands the importance of, of getting it cleaned up, 'cause I, I think there, there's a lawnmower under there, fuel sources. After having seen what happened in Biloxi with I-110 and a fire damaging the road and causing it to be shut down for a limited period of time, I don't think we need to take any chances on a road like six oh nine where it's that busy. So, we need to reach out to MDOT and see what we can do to get that cleaned up under there, and do something to control that population underneath the bridge, because the last thing we need is the bridge shut down indefinitely because a fire causes a significant hazard to the traveling public, so... Believe last time it got cleaned up, there was a person that got felony charges for illegal dumping because it was so bad.
I believe MDOT has given us the authority to clean that up underneath their bridge.
Are they giving us any money to clean it up?
No, they have not. But they have given us the authority to do it.
Yeah. Also, I, I...
I'm pretty sure, I'm almost certain, we can look at that. Recently, when, when we did the last cleanup, when the guy got charged with the felony, we did get, uh, a letter from MDOT, uh, giving us the permission to do that.
Are we able to post it so that we can keep people out, so it doesn't get this bad? I mean, 'cause at this point, I mean, you never know what can happen under there.
I mean, we've talked about some different things, some different ideas about what we might, could be able to do to try to prevent that, but I think any of that's gonna require a permit, Joe, to be able to do that.
I guess, we, we need to get, come up with a, a cleanup plan, funding plan, uh, if MDOT gave us authority, but they didn't give us any money, I guess, I mean, somebody's got to take care of it, and I mean... Then we, we need to come up with a part two of that plan, is what do we do to keep people from putting stuff under there to begin with?
It might be good if we just got together, Joe, me, you, and Rhonda, and, and maybe AJ, 'cause he's been involved a lot with it too, and just try to see if we could come up with a solution.
Do y'all need any board action, or is this something we can just move forward with?
Let us look into it first.
Also, I'd like to get our board attorney to look into, how do we keep the panhandlers from, from, from interfering with the traffic? I mean, I constantly get complaints about those folks basically just knocking on people's window, knowing that, that they're, they're...
My second item is, under supervisor items, is actually gonna talk about safety at intersections, and, uh, that, that rolls into that.
Yeah, we, we gotta do something about that, that's, uh, I don't know how, you know, I just watched a program over the weekend where a city tried it and got sued, and ended up, uh, the, the panhandlers won in Supreme Court, you know, imagine that.
Well, my, my thought would be...
So, you gotta figure out something to keep them out of the traffic.
I've got several instances where I've seen problems where, I mean, there's one at exit fifty where I was taking the left turn, getting on, going west, and I've watched a guy slip, and he fell into the road, and the car in front, he was there, just went around him, but the car behind them, they didn't see him, so they had to dodge him a little bit more abruptly, and so it's becoming an issue where if you're over a certain, uh, carload, if your road capacity is at like thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand, you're starting to get so many drivers out there to where it's not a safe thing for people to loiter in medians. I've seen that one, and I've seen one at fifty-seven and, and ninety, where a person was walking through traffic when the light had turned green to get money out of a window that was three lanes over, which, hey, that's fine if a person wants to do that and all, but that third car bat has to react, and their reaction time gets very much diminished by the time it gets to them, and that's when the wreck occurs, that's when somebody gets hit. And the last thing I want to see is, you know, an older lady, an older man, or a young new driver, or a driver's been driving forever, run over a homeless person and kill him or hurt him, and then have to live with knowing they ran somebody over their whole life, just because we didn't take action and stop people from loitering at busy intersections. So I would like to see if we could draft something saying that if a traffic count is above X, maybe thirty-five thousand cars, that you can't loiter in those intersections.
Let, let me look at that, I think that, uh, number one, panhandling, asking for money is a, is a, is a, is a free speech, uh, issue.
And I'm not worried about panhandling, I mean, panhandling's fine, I'm worried about the safety of everybody involved.
Right, I understand, I think, but like everything else, there are limits on, on, uh, how far free speech can go. Uh, I do think, without looking at it, that...
You can't yell "fire" in a crowded, in a crowded room, I mean, 'cause you may hurt other people.
You, you can, you could probably somehow limit, uh, maybe the panhandling for safety issues, not for free speech issues, we gotta be careful how we craft it, uh, we'll, we'll end up, uh, being sued in, in federal court, um, but let me do some research on how other governmental entities have handled that, and, and see if we can't craft some type of reasonable, uh, regulation in, in that regard.
I mean, and as it gets hotter, it gets worse, 'cause I've watched some of those folks, they'd be sitting out there all day, and it's ninety degrees, they're hot, they're thirsty, they're dehydrated.
One of them had a sunshade out there the other day, when I passed by there.
They lose their balance, and they slip off, they're just one slip away from having a catastrophic incident that an innocent driver has to live with forever.
Most of them bring their dogs with them now, so you got the dog and the person sitting there, and you can't even hardly make that left-hand turn without possibly running over one of them.
Trying to think, there was another one I saw the other day, they, it was, it was just a safety hazard waiting to happen, and, I mean, and it's always fine until someone gets hurt, and when they get hurt, it's too late to do anything. All right, so that moved my other item up, so that one's gone now, we don't have that. All right, action items, anything there?
Uh, just quick, I wanted to give you an update on some funding, uh, usually during the summertime is when we get all our grant requests and, and projects that we try to secure funding for, but I did meet and talk to some of the people on the Restore Act committees about infrastructure projects in the future, and, uh, there were three projects that were, um, recommended for, for further consideration of funding, and we supported those, uh, the first one was the North Rail Connector project that we've been trying to, uh, help get funding for. Secondly was the Signet Bulkhead Project on the Pascagoula River, and the third project, which was recently added, is the South Apron for the airport, that's the next apron project out there, so those are the three that we, uh, are, are supporting for, for Restore Act funding. And then, uh, on the federal level, just wanted to let you know that, um, the airport has submitted for a THUD grant for the South Apron Project also, and it's been picked up by Wicker's office, and I think it's on his recommended funding list, so, just wanted to kind of give y'all an update on those funding requests that we have.
Wild guess on timeline?
Uh, usually the Restore Act announcements come out by the end of the year, calendar year, usually around, you know, the last part of November, and, uh, and as far as the THUD grant, uh, you know, it's hard to tell when, when Congress will take up another appropriation cycle, could be this time next year, um, who knows?
All right, supervisor items, uh, Mr. Combest?
I didn't have anything.
All right, Mr. Morris?
Yes, I had a discussion on Boys and Girls Clubs, uh, summers program, uh, maybe last month board meeting, uh, Ms. Anderson came in, and, uh, said she was having trouble funding the summer program because lack of, uh, donations, and, uh, we was taking, we tabled it, said we was gonna talk about putting it on the budget for next year, but really school was out Friday, and, uh, they really needed funding for it now, so I was just, uh, see, could we put a motion in to fund that, the summer program, maybe five thousand dollars?
Is, is that a new, a motion for already budgeted money, or new?
No, um, that would be a new request, um, we would consider the additional funding in next year's budget, you know, what they requested the other day when they were for you, but as I understand it, this would be additional money to support their summer program this year, and so, it would just have to, we, we can legally do it, it just has to come out of the general fund, I assume.
As I understand it, they've, you said they really need it now.
Oh, yes, they, uh...
I'll second your motion on that.
Uh, like I said, the, the keys are now, you know, uh, Jackson County, uh...
We've got a motion...
This generation is different from my generation, where they, you could stay at home and I'll go to the swimming pool, uh, it don't take number one or two of them to lead in the wrong direction, and, and you know how that goes.
Hey, is, is cheaper to get them involved and active when they're young than it is to do something with them when they're older?
Keep them occupied, yeah.
Uh, we've got a motion by Mr. Morris, a second by Mr. Combest.
Can, can I ask one question? Uh, I think that the statute does allow for money to be given, Brian and Josh, we're not, uh, bumping up on any limits, are we? I think the statute says maybe up to a quarter mil for all boys and girls clubs within a, within a, a county?
It should be fine.
We're good? We're good, okay, okay.
Any, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Mr. Taylor?
I have none.
I have none anymore. Mr. Bossarge?
None.
All right, that brings us to close determination, so do you have the list of items?
Uh, two things, uh, that I know of, one is the amendment I made, so we can discuss the pending litigation singing, I mean, uh, Jackson County, Mississippi versus George County and Singer River Services. The second is, um, uh, perspective of potential litigation on a, a road project, uh, matter, uh, that I need to give the board some legal advice on.
All right, can we have a motion? We've got a motion by Mr. Combest, a second by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, motion carries.